We'll start in about 30 seconds. At this time, if the Reverend Rachel Benefield-Pass would say our invocation this evening, she's the pastor at Leggett Memorial United Methodist Church here in Biloxi. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you for the invitation to be here today. Let us pray. Almighty God, sit down, Father, with leadership, in this city of Biloxi, fear of wisdom, charity, and justice. Be with us all this evening, in God, our thoughts, our discussion, our time together, with purpose, single purpose, effectively serving this city. Pray for all who make decisions, who offer presentations, that you, for God, person. Pray for peace. We pray for those who come into our city, have been devastated by hurricane. Help us to see your people, because we are a whore. Yes, please, give some part of it.
Amen. Thank you. And if Mr. Derek Gates would lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, and limited to justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Benefield, and thank you, Mr. Gates. Appreciate that. All right, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Aye.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Any discussion? All in favor? It's a 7-0 vote. Thank you. The clerk would read the changes, please.
To the consent agenda, we're adding item 5AA, resolution authorizing renewal of SSL certificate from godaddy.com or the city website. Adding item 5BB, resolution authorizing change order number 11 with lane construction for Hurricane Katrina, infrastructure repair.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'm approving the amended.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Brings us to the mayor's report.
I'd like to announce that tonight, a group of firefighters and retired firefighters and other volunteers working with those people from our museum, our fire museum, a nonprofit unaffiliated with the city, are in Independence, Louisiana tonight, delivering supplies and cooking for the folks in Independence, Louisiana. I'd also like to point out that it was announced last Friday, that on Saturday, we would begin collecting relief supplies at our 10 fire stations. We have done that, and we're almost at a point where we've got a full trailer load to haul. And we made arrangements to send another group to Lafitte, Louisiana by the weekend. They will be delivering the supplies to fire station number 40 in Lafitte, Louisiana. So we're engaged in trying to help our brothers and sisters next door. I just wanted to add that for the record. Also for the record, I asked that you spread the credit card across the, whatever that thing is we do.
Yeah, we'll spread it on the minutes for you. That's the expense credit card for travel. That was it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. I don't see any departmental reports. I don't believe we have any. That brings us to the council reports. I'll start with Mr. Gaines, Ward 2.
Yeah, I wanted to thank one of our civic groups, East Community Collaborative, for putting a lot of the red strips on all the stop signs throughout the east Biloxi, east side of community and throughout the city. They really show and glow in the night. So just wanted to thank that group. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. Lawrence.
I had Peter give us an update on the Swetman House, some of the latest things on Yeah, the situation with the Swetman House is, we have a maintenance fund that has, how much in it?
Several hundred thousand.
Couple hundred thousand dollars in it. I think if we're going to try to come to a conclusion about transfer or disposition of it, I think we should first get a assessment or inspection of what repairs need to be done, what needs to be done with it. And we have a couple hundred thousand in that account to start getting it maintained and fixed up. And at the same time, we could be in discussions with the People's Bank Foundation, letting them know if they have any alternate suggestions and make a move to either get it into good shape to where it could be reutilized as a city asset, or put it in the hands of someone to put it on the tax rolls. So we're gonna, I think, starting with an inspection report and seeing how much needs to be done to it. And we also have in that maintenance account, we can start using that to upgrade the surrounding of it and get the appearance of it to looking a lot better. Well, legally, could we put it in like a community house for the neighborhood? Or how's that written in the foundation, what the building could be used for? It was given to the city with the understanding that it would always be a banker's museum. I don't know what that really means. That's what we're trying to, you know, is it just to have a plaque? Is it, it's been used as a meeting place for different city groups over the years, but it's not really been rented that much as of late because of the condition of it.
I had a conversation with the family.
I had a conversation with the family not too long ago, and the family is more than happy to let us find an alternate use for that, so long as something like a plaque on the building recognizing what the history of it was and so forth was done. They're open to any suggestions we might have about an alternate use.
So there might be way more opportunities than we think now. That'd be good.
Yep.
You know, just long, fine, you know, upgrade it, like you said, fix it up. It'd be nice to be used for the neighbors, for whatever, community house, whatever you want to call it. But it's a nice place sitting right there, right on the perfect spot. So that's good for that. So it's something else we need to look at. And on the Keesler Circle, y'all kept saying, yeah, wait till August the 23rd. That's passed, so where are we in that area? What are we doing with that now? Yeah, actually, the tax sale, it's over in Biloxi, but it's still going on in Gulfport. Right now, I checked in between meetings with the tax collector. That's still going on. Once the Gulfport sale is over, probably next week, we'll know whether or not it went to that previous tax holder. And then I would, I'm gonna calculate, if they gave it to the city, then what would it cost us to have to redeem the past taxes? There's three years of past taxes, plus that special assessment that's on the property. So before we just accept it, I want to make sure that we don't have to pay $5,000 or something like that. It may work out better if some of the neighbors are interested. This group would probably give it to the neighbors if they would pay the taxes. So I mean, I want to get the number of what the assessment would be and what it would be for them to transfer it. If they did that, would that be three years? They'd have to pay the taxes for three years? Yeah, I don't think anybody's paid the taxes for at least three years. Okay, good. Something that they're interested in, at least clean it up, make it look good and use it as they park. They said they're interested in doing it. I don't know about them buying it. Well, if you, there's a couple houses there on the side. If somebody could get a side yard for $3,000 or $4,000, that's not a bad deal, but it's... It's not bad. There's 20 by 200, nothing much else you can do with it. Just be a yard, you know? Yeah. All right, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Demmon.
Jerry, or, I guess Mr. Allen's not here, Mike. When the city goes through and replaces asphalt or concrete for a road, if that changes the elevation of the road, actually reduces it, if there was a slant from the driveway onto that road, who's responsible for changing the road, the slant of that driveway? That, you know, the driveway comes down, and there's about six inches of slant like that where the asphalt used to be, then there's been some erosion, and we filled it in, but there's a gap. So he wants to know, is it his responsibility to tear it, to mill up that concrete and re-slant it so it's not a drop-off? Or is the city responsible for that?
Without seeing the diagram, I'd have to guess it's city.
If it's on the city right away, I would assume that it's the city's responsibility.
Okay, I will send a request to have someone go look at it, if that's the case, because it is. Nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. Demmon. Mr. Barrett?
Couple things. I know that we didn't get much damage from Ida in Biloxi, but we did get some surge. And I have a good bit of people in Eagle Point, Oaklawn area, that have a ton of that grass that's out by the road. And it's not Pelican, it'll take them weeks to pick that up. So if there's, I don't know what the answer is, if we just send our trucks out and keep making trips until it's done. But especially that North River View circle, it's really bad there, and on the backside of Eagle Point as well. And with what the trucks that Pelican send through, there's no way that they're gonna, it's gonna take weeks and weeks, and this stuff's stinky and...
Remember that after Tropical Storm... No, no, no. Or that Cristobal. We had that same problem where all the debris moved up into those harbors. What we did was we got a contractor to come in there and scoop it all up and haul it away. My understanding is for Ida, this last storm, that we are, we're not gonna get building repairs and so forth and pier repairs, but we are gonna be able to bill FEMA for their share of debris removal.
And this isn't in the water like before. These people have moved it up.
It's up on the land, yeah.
They've moved it up to the road, but it's just on that one road, on the bottom half of North River View Circle.
I think it's worth a shot, asking for it to be, we still gotta do it, though.
Yeah, but if we can get a contract, I mean, it's...
If it's out by the road, that's a whole lot easier.
Yeah, there's a lot of it, though, so I know Pelican won't get, it'll take weeks for Pelican to pick it up. And I believe that that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, we certainly dodged a bullet with Hurricane Ida, and I've been on the phone for the last week, calling people who had reservations at several of our hotels. I mean, hundreds of phone calls that I've made talking to these folks, you know, in the Grand Isle area, La Plaize, Port La Fiche, and others. And they are, they are so, I mean, I can't tell you how they appreciate the thoughts that Biloxi has on what they're going through. And there was a, I think the city may have published this, there was a video that went viral, and it was a gentleman that was just thanking. He was out of the country, and his family had to relocate to Biloxi.
In Russia, actually. He was actually in Russia.
In Russia, that's correct.
Sakhalin Island.
And, you know, he, it's just, if you get a chance to listen to that video, go to YouTube or go to the city site and listen to it, but the outpouring, he said Biloxi over and over, and, I mean, you could tell he was touched by the generosity. Donnie Handler, who is a friend of mine, he's in Crew of Neptune with some of the other Crew of Neptune guys, and they've organized past hurricane relief, they're doing the same thing this time, but I'm just gonna say that while I have time on my report, Donnie Handler, hours and hours and hours, making sure that he was touching people, evacuees that were coming here. There was a benefit at the Canary, a couple days ago, he was instrumental in kind of getting that organized. The Judd Atkins, you know, over, he has a restaurant over off of Pops Ferry Road as well, and he's donating money. Knight Transportation, which Gerald Everett worked for Knight Transportation, they saw the effort that Gerald Everett was putting into this effort, and his owner, Stokimichak, for $2,000 and said, hey, use this for relief efforts. But it's really touching, not only to hear these folks say, thank you for thinking of us, and we'll get through it, it just brings back those memories of the stuff that we went through, you know, as well. And, you know, we're here for them, and that, just them knowing that is important. And I know we have, some of you have family and friends over in the Louisiana area, but I'm telling you, we really, really, really dodged the bullet with this one. And hopefully the recovery is speedy, and they can get back on their feet, and we can move on. And so I just, I wanted to spend the majority of my time just talking about that.
You're gonna remember Tunnel to Towers, I think, too.
What's that?
You're gonna remember Tunnel to Towers.
Oh, yeah. Coming up.
I thought maybe you'd wanna plug it.
Well, yeah, Tunnels to Towers this year actually falls on, this event actually falls on 9/11. I think it's the first time we've had tunnels to towers fall on 9/11, and it's certainly gonna be a big event, and it's gonna be significant, it's gonna have a lot, it always has a lot of meaning, but even this year when it falls on 9/11. I think the chief, I think during the run, we're gonna have one of the cruisers out there that's wrapped, and the fire department will have a couple of fire trucks with the flags flying. And as you know, they run the bridge, and those firefighters simulate running up the stairs several times to mimic the height of stairs, you know, at the Twin Towers. So, you know, I hope everybody gets to participate, whether you walk it, spectator, or you run it. Please make time to come out, because it's really, really important. It's who we are, it's an American, it's why we're all Americans. So, thank you, Mike, for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Couple, a number of things, really. Mr. O'Brien, how we coming on that noise ordinance that's being revised?
Yeah, we had a meeting scheduled with our county counterpart, and Hurricane Ida got in the way that Friday, so we're in the process of rescheduling that. But that's gonna be a key component of any sort of noise ordinance we do, that we get compliance or acceptance from the county. Because without the Coliseum joining along, it's just gonna be a hollow noise ordinance.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to check on was the tree mitigation bank, and I know we were looking to do something with that.
That's in Jerry and Eric's hands, I think.
I talked with Diana about that during the budget session, about establishing the tree mitigation bank. She is going to set up an account for that, so that we would be able to move forward with developers that cannot plant a number of trees on their own property, that they would pay into the mitigation bank. So we're working on that.
Right, I just think that's a terrific idea. Appreciate that. Thank you for moving forward.
But I think the ordinance, the final draft of the ordinance, Jerry, we probably need to get that ready in the next few weeks.
We've just about got it ready. Eric and I reviewed it last Thursday, and we've made some changes to the recommendations, just to kind of streamline it so that it would be more understandable for a contractor or someone, we can hand it to them and they can understand it, but it'll be coming forward to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Creo. A reminder that there's a Ward 5 meeting tomorrow night, that's Wednesday at 6 o'clock at the Snyder Center. You don't have to live in Ward 5. The public's welcome, and maybe it's a slow night on TV, and sometimes it's good entertainment. Any idea, I know we're talking about two boat launches. One was the Camellia Street Boat Launch. I don't know if there's even a timeline established for that yet or not. Have you heard of that?
I'll find out and report at the next meeting. That's a county project.
Right.
Island's funded.
Okay, and the other was the Hiller...
Hiller Park.
Which I know we're...
I talked to Seaman Engineering about that just today. They're right at final stages of design. We should be able to put that out to bid in October.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. I'm not a boater, but I have boater friends who ask about those things.
You wanted to ask me something else about the water bill? No?
I'm getting to that. Be patient. But I have one other, the traffic signal at White Avenue and Irish Hill, since the main gate at Keesler, what used to be the main gate. Now, it's pretty much closed, although the visitor's center is still there, so if you're wanting to get on base, you have to cross the railroad tracks, hit the visitor's center, come back over the railroad tracks, and enter somewhere else. And that, that traffic signal, I guess, is on a timer? Is there any way that could be modified? I think White Avenue, that gate is, as I understand it, is only open in the morning for people coming to work, and that's it? I'm not sure, but anyway, I've gotten several folks who've said, can't they do something about the light? There's nobody coming, you're on Irish Hill, and you have to stop and wait. So is there some way that could be adjusted or tweaked, or?
It can be.
Okay. You think it will be?
Yes, I think it will be.
All right, that's great. You wanna hazard a date?
No, that gate closure is not permanent.
Okay. Right, no, I understand that at some point, but in the meantime, anything to help with traffic there would be great. It gets stacked up sometimes. Here's where we go. Q the Cao. I'm just thinking it would be a nice touch, as they do in some other cities on the coast, that when we send out water and sewer bills, that maybe we included a self-addressed, not a stamped, but a self-addressed envelope, so that when you wanted to pay your water and sewer bill, you wrote your check, dropped it right in the envelope, stuck a stamp on it, get it back, turn it around real quick. What do you think?
I'm sure we could do that. I'll get you a price. I know that only 30, 40% of the people may mail their bills in, so would be a lot of throwaway envelopes, but envelopes aren't very expensive, we can try that. What I was hinting about is the timing of the bill. Where several of you have asked me, could we do something about the late bills? I thought about that. I looked at my last bill. The bill was dated the 20th, that was the print date, the 20th. 15 days later, it was due on the 5th. Came to me in the mail on the 2nd. Clearly, the printing and mailing time is eating up most of the time people would have, so we've changed that from 15 days to 20 days. So now that bill, which was cut on the 20th and was due on the 5th, would then be due on the 10th. So we'll see if that helps. The ordinance says 10 days, and so we're gonna have to change the ordinance at some point. Right now, it says 10, and we're doing 15, but now we're gonna do 20. We're not gonna lose any money on that. It's just an annoyance that people get the bill, they gotta mail it immediately to keep from having a, and several of you talked to me about that, so that's what we're gonna do. It's already changed to 20.
Mr. Barrett, I think he looked at you the whole time when he was talking. But anyway, no, I would imagine we all get a call from time to time, some more than others, but we thank you for being responsive on that. Appreciate it. Okay. Yeah, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, got a second here. Kenny brought this up. You know, 20 years ago, we was doing the exact same thing we're doing now. Worry about spending money, worry about doing this, are we gonna take care of this? We're gonna take that? And what's happened when we having these meetings? They thought blowing up the United States. We sent these meetings off, and it was a Tuesday when all that happened. You know? And here we are, worrying about spinning nickels, you know, all of us. And then you see what could happen in the United States that quick. That was 20 years ago, on September 11. So sometimes we get out of line when we talk that about, worrying about doing this and that. And some of the main things is protecting the United States and protecting the citizens of the United States. And that's tough. When you watch some towers went down or something like that, I was holding a little there, and we sitting there worrying about spending a dollar here and a dollar there, and you got people dying right and left. It was pretty amazing. Got your attention pretty quick. Second thing, Mike, I forgot to bring this up a while ago. I asked y'all to look at, if we gave the employees a 3% raise, what would it actually cost the city to do that? If just council decided to give a 3% raise, do we just do that, or we have to have a resolution, we have to pass something to do it?
Well, I think you're daylight and a dollar short. I mean, we're...
We're short, because last year, we waited a whole year. We're gonna look at it. We're not looking at it.
As far as the budget, this budget is conservative.
What would it take, money-wise? That's what I was asking, that's what I asked them last time. You know, it's time for us, if these people, I could tell you, since 2016, the people had not received a penny more, then anybody looked at. And we don't need to wait six months, eight months, 10 months, whatever.
If your question is, what is the cost to the city for a 3% raise for everybody? And I'll run those numbers, and I'll have them to you tomorrow.
I appreciate that. And I'd like to pass it on to the rest of the council, say, y'all can look at that.
But I heard conversation earlier today, I think it was when we were in the budget session, about revisiting the whole salary situation in the first quarter of next year.
Well, that's correct. This has come up several times during the budget workshop about the compensation schedule, and the mayor said, once we approve the budget, he's gonna take the next couple of months. He's willing to work with the council and look at the compensation schedule and the compensation package for all the employees with the idea or the goal that January 1st, there would be a pay raise for the city employees. I mean, that's, I think, if you go back and check the videos, at some point, you'll hear that issue was raised a couple of times, and the mayor said that both times. I'm hoping that within the next couple of weeks, I'm certainly gonna sit down and talk with the mayor. I'm welcome to go with other council members if they'd like to attend, as long as we don't have a quorum, and sit down and just get the ball rolling, because I don't want us to be, you know, discussing details in December about a pay raise for employees. I'd like to get all that nailed down sometime no later than the end of November, because sometimes we have issues that come before us, and it's tabled, and it's tabled again, and it's tabled again. I'd like, if we're gonna do this, let's get it done, so that employees are looking at a pay raise in January. And I think, I think that would be everybody's goal here. I don't, just from the comments, I've heard in general that, yeah, the only question is, what's it gonna cost, how much, and how exactly is it gonna be done? All the details. And if we have to have a workshop or two, we'll have a workshop or two on compensation and the package as a whole. I mean, we knocked out insurance, we're looking at doing some things to improve coverage and make it a little more bearable for everybody. But our hourly rates, there was some of that included in the budget that we intend on approving Tuesday, but there's still a number of other employees who, at this point, won't get any kind of a raise unless we approve a new compensation schedule here in the next, I guess, 60, 80 days. So I'm hoping we can get the ball rolling, get that done, so that's in place and ready to go in January. I don't have anything to add. You may have a comment.
It's becoming a competition between the cities right now, and we're not gonna be able to hang on to our folks if we don't do something. The one thing we did do in this budget, and we said this out loud, and it should be in the record, that we raised the minimum wage that the city's willing to pay for any position. We raised that to $12.50 an hour from $11 an hour, and that was affected about 70 employees who were in a group of jobs that turnover awfully fast. We can't, we can't attract or keep people at $11 an hour. But if we don't do something about fire and police, pretty soon, we're gonna have real problems there, keep competing with the other cities.
Well, we all look forward to seeing what the administration proposes, okay?
Sure.
All right, that concludes the council reports. We now get to the public agenda, citizens' comments. Anyone who wishes to speak will be granted up to three minutes. If you do come to speak, please speak into the mic, so the folks viewing can hear you say your name clearly, so the clerk can record it accurately and sign in. There's a sign-in sheet. We'll allow the total of 45 minutes if we have that many speakers. Anybody on my left, your right, wish to speak? Mr. Kemp? We know where you live, and we know where your house... We know where you live, and we know where your house is.
Might be somebody here that don't know that.
That's right.
I'm going to say it every time.
Good to see you, John.
Good to see you, too.
So my name's John Kemp. My house lives at 178 Hannibal Court, but I proudly live in the city of Biloxi. Mr. Tisdale, thank you so much for your e-blast that you send out every Sunday night. Regardless if I'm at 178 Hannibal Court or if I'm at 22 Nehimer Straße in Jominy, I can still see what this city's doing and prepare for my comments. So it's really a blessing to have that for the last two and a half years or so. So I'm here to say thank you, first of all, to everyone in the wards, especially the chief of police, because we forget how dangerous the hurricanes can be and the protection that we receive when, when the hurricane's beating us up. The, the police are still out there, and in a lot of cases, the firemen are out there. So thank you and welcome also, Chief Geiser and Assistant Chief Davis. Speaking of which, we're coming up on the five-year anniversary of the tragedy that happened on Main Street. I would love to see if we can put together something to honor those victims. Just a small memorial or something, just to recognize that. You might not realize this, but the airman that was killed recently on Kessler was also from that small town in Texas. So it's been a, been a pretty hard several years for that little small, Bastrop, Texas is the name of the city. Pardon me for the football analogies, but we're in football season. Forty years ago this week, I had the privilege of playing with the arguably the best junior high football team in this state's history. We were undefeated and unscored on them. And there's a story to that. I'm holding a resolution that, that shows teamwork. And it's a resolution that's about housing incentive to do improvements in downtown Biloxi, AKA War II, AKA East Biloxi. It's a tri-party agreement between Main Street, the city of Biloxi, and Mr. and Mrs. Griffin. So that's a win in War II. And councilmen, guys, I look forward to continuing to block for you. I don't want to be a quarterback. That's why I avoided this council all last year, because people have the idea that I want your job, and I don't want your job, trust me. But you're doing a good job, and I'll keep up the good work. We're here to work for you as a nonprofit and as a, as a member that fortunately mentors young people. I ask that you please, when you're considering these resolutions, that you think about the at-risk children. We got children in this ward, this city, that wants to stay in Biloxi. We need to retain our talent. I hate talking to an eighth grader that has his mind on leaving Biloxi at thirteen. We need to change that. We need to want those eighth graders to stay in Biloxi and go with us, instead of retiring army and then having to come back and, you know, fuss and fight with everybody. But again, keep up the good work. And again, forty years ago, Frontwood Warriors, arguably the best football team in this state's history, undefeated and unscored on. So thank you again, Mr. Tisdale.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Anybody else on my left, your right, wish to address the council? Anybody on my right, your left? Yes, sir.
My name is Charles Whiteside. I reside at 1900 Paul David Drive in Biloxi and Taylor Oaks subdivision. I met with your, the council last November at your night meeting. And you were gracious enough to listen to my request for our neighborhood and had other representatives from our neighborhood at that time. We had, we had requested there be a consideration of a speed table or some kind of mechanism to slow down traffic due to something we experienced during the Halloween trick-or-treating in our neighborhood with a lot of young kids. The city did the right thing. They listened, and they appropriated the funds to, to install a speed table. I just happened to reside halfway through that road, so it was the right location to have it installed to kind of decrease the acceleration on either side. They moved quickly. I get a, get a request, and I think it was January or late January. Do we still feel like we wanted to have it installed, and we agreed to? But if you go back to the minutes of that November meeting, it was, it was referred to as being as Hingen Place, as a speed table in Hingen Place. Between the time of the meeting and the time that I got that, that email or text, I went and actually drove through Hingen Place several times, and I was very pleased with what was installed there. What was installed in Paul David is not really close to it. The dimensions are seen miniscule, but it's totally gargantuan as far as what's there. Their, their speed table's five inches, ours is seven. The black top width is just under two feet narrower, therefore, the centerpiece is protruded farther out to the curb, which, which really gives a traumatic drop-off to a point where you can't even park in front of my house, because it would take out your transmission or oil pan in your, your vehicle. Now, I noticed how it was going to be. They installed the egress ramps on either side. They had not poured the centerpiece. I contacted Mr. Glavine at his, his credit. He came out the morning they were going to pour it, and they proceeded to go ahead and let the contractor install it. After that, I've been pretty vocal about it, about trying to get it modified, shaved down the edges, because on the edges is where it's the absolute worst, the last two or three feet on either side. And I haven't, I don't know how that's progressed. It's been about six months, and I haven't been able to get any kind of timeline, any kind of feedback on any progress on this. Something needs to happen. I've never seen anything polarize a neighborhood like this has. I mean, when I say that, runners, walkers, neighbors, it's been, it's had an effect. It's had an effect on the personality of it. So I'm here to plead with you to put it back on the table, to try to have somebody take a look at it, and to see if there's anything that can be done to modify it, okay?
Just a quick question. I'm, to be sure I understand, so a, a speed table was installed?
Yes, sir. The one on the bottom of that picture is the one that's in Hingen, you know, Taylor Oaks.
But it's a bit, in some spots, the angle is so steep, you said you could lose your transmission.
You can't really see it so much in the picture. I thought it would come up better. But the black top itself, the actual asphalt surface, is narrower than it is in Hingen. Therefore, it's a dramatic drop-off. The table in Hingen is five inches, this is seven inches. So when you, you combine the two, the real problem is the last two to three feet on each edge.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Whiteside. Appreciate that.
So any consideration would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to address the council? Okay, they conclude citizens' comments. We'll move to the policy agenda. We have a, a number of ordinances. This is a first reading, and I'll ask Mr. Creel, once we, once we get started on these ordinances, just to make a general comment up, upfront, because we do this periodically. So at this time, if the clerk would read item four A, that first ordinance for our first reading.
Ordinance amending section 511, 513, and 515 of the building code.
Okay, there's a, there's a motion by Mr. Guines. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. And before we move on, Mr. Creel, if you would, just kind of explain what, what we're, what's, what's occurring with these first readings and the ordinances.
Every, every three years, the International Code Congress updates the building codes, the individual building codes, and the fire prevention code. And they do this to keep up with new technology or any new type of invention that's coming out in the, in the construction industry. So it helps us to always be on top of it, and once we get the new codebooks in, we review those to make sure that there are any surprise changes in there, but that's something that's really consistent with what we're trying to achieve. So essentially, what this is, is adopting the 2021 updated version from the 2018.
And we do this periodically, and contractors are well aware.
Every three years, yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Creel. All right, we'll move to item B. If the clerk would read that, please.
Ordinance amending section 5111 of the building code.
Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll second.
There's a motion by Mr. Guines and a second by Mr. Glavine. Thank you. If the clerk would read item... I don't have any problem with that. Peter, is there a...
Well, I would suggest let's do A through I, because item J, I'm going to have some special comments.
Okay. So we'll, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to do, to, 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 I guess, conclude our first reading on item C through I?
I, yes, sir.
Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Guines.
Second.
There it is. B through I. So that's a motion by Mr. Guines and a second by Mr. Glavine. All right, thank you. Item J is just a little, just a little bit different. If the clerk would read that item, please.
We got to vote on that.
Need to vote? Vote on all the way to J?
No, you don't.
We don't?
No. First reading.
Oh, we moved it.
First reading. That's all right. That's okay. If the clerk would read item J, please.
Ordinance amending portions of chapter eight of the flood damage and prevention ordinance.
I'll move it again. There's a motion by Mr. Guines.
Second.
Is that by Mr. Barrett?
Correct.
All right, thank you. All right, and Mr. Creel, if you would explain, thank you, because I asked you to speak to this one directly, because it's significant, and the public needs to be aware.
Yes, sir. What's happening, we've been informed that FEMA is going to be making some radical changes to the way that they assess properties for flood risk, and they're going to go into effect October the first. It's very complicated. It's something that's going to require a lot of discussion. So what I'd like to do, either this week or next week, before the council votes on this, is to ask the council to have a workshop, so that we can actually explain in detail what these changes are. We don't know all of the details to it. We've, we've gathered as many of the details as we can, but it's something that I feel the council's going to have a lot of questions about. So I would rather address that through the workshop forum, if that's okay with the council.
Right, we have a regularly scheduled council meeting on the 21st, which is two weeks from tonight. We have a special council meeting next Tuesday to approve the budget, whatever's most convenient for the council. I think the sooner the better, since it deals with, you know, flood insurance, just so folks understand what's going on out there. Any thoughts, Mr. Glavine?
I'd say we allot, how, how long you think the workshop would, would last?
It would depend on the questions, but I would say probably not more than an hour.
Yeah, I'd say we allot an hour at either, at the, at one of the meetings and go ahead and knock it out.
Does the council have a preference for a, a meeting day, George?
Have you, you have the changes already, or was it suggested?
No, sir. We haven't, we haven't changed anything. We're...
No, I'm saying, do you have the change? You said you're going to make a radical changes.
No, FEMA is making radical changes, yes, sir, that go into effect October the first. And so we're going to have to modify our, you know, ordinance to comply with that. And it's, the result is going to be some serious increases in flood insurance premiums. And so what we'd like to do is to explain to the city council about the direction that FEMA is going with this and the science behind it, and what we're recommending to do to kind of soften the blow on some of those increases.
We have the right to do that, or they don't accept anything?
Well, we can't take anything less than what FEMA recommends, but what we can do is to beef up our flood prevention ordinance a little bit, that would help us to either maintain or increase the discounts that they're getting on the flood insurance premiums. Everything that we, everything that we do in our ordinance that increases the regulation above the norm, we get credit points for it through CRS. And the, the more things that we do, the more points we get. Right now, we are a five rating, which is the best in the state, but we're only two points over what's required to have that five rating. And what we're running into is that, as ever since Hurricane Katrina, as people were aware that they were able to get these discounts based on the more in compliance that they came with flood ordinance. In the last couple of years especially, the flood insurance program is tightening the screws on those regulations to make it more and more difficult to get those discounts. And so what we want to do is try and head this off before it, everybody gets blindsided with it.
Dr. Tisdale, I think we should just add it on to our meeting. Which, which Tuesday, and that's what I'm thinking, the sooner the better, you'd be prepared.
We'd be prepared, yes, sir.
So, so we have a special meeting to adopt the fiscal budget, next year's budget, at 1:30, and we'll follow that immediately with a workshop on the National Flood Insurance Program?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so that's, next Tuesday, following the special meeting at 1:30, we'll be having a workshop on flood insurance. Thank you, Mr. Creel. All right, that, that brings us to item K. If the clerk would read item K, please.
Ordinance amending section seven for fire prevention code and fire prevention code.
I'll entertain a motion.
Moved.
Second.
By Mr. Glavine, a second by Mr. Barrett. Thank you, gentlemen. That brings us to item L. If the clerk would read item L, please.
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance to clarify standards for the specific use of animal husbandry.
I think that's Mr. Demings, you know, Willhouse. You want to make a motion?
What do you think, Willbur?
I have truth here. No response for that.
Is there, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Thank you, gentlemen. If the clerk would read item M, please.
Ordinance to amend section 9122A pertaining to garbage collection fees.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
I think Mr. Barrett, did you second that? Mr. Barrett seconded that. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. All right, that, that brings us to item N. If the clerk would read the resolution, please.
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plat approval for 1641 Pops Ferry Road.
I'll move it.
There's a motion by Mr. Glavine.
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Glavine, comment?
Yeah, all this is, this is a couple of parcels. It happens, there's a couple of commercial buildings, and the property line is running through the building, so we're just moving the, the property line, so it's contiguous around the buildings instead of going through the building. That's all it is. It's a minor, it's a monoprocedural thing.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Any comments, Mr. Barrett? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. If the clerk would read the resolution for item O, please.
Resolution, amending resolution number 62721, authorizing MetLife Insurance to provide employees with dental insurance benefits.
Is there a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Mr. Barrett. There's a second by, was that Mr. Guines? Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
I just, last week, whenever we did this, I had a, I misunderstood what was being proposed. And so I asked for it to be put back on with the, the monthly premium to be, to go, for families to be what it is currently.
Okay, if I understand you correctly, to clarify, la- last week, when we approved these tiers, your understanding was there was no increase for any of the tiers, but there is in fact an increase, the employee plus family?
Correct.
Of... Was that...
It was sixteen, it was sixty-six. And I just misunderstood, and, and I voted for it, not understanding that, that it was increasing sixteen dollars a month for the family.
There would be a net of increase of sixteen dollars and some change.
And so I just, I put it back on for the fifty.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Guines, comment?
Yeah, just wanted to say it was a good catch. Appreciate you catching that. I think it almost slipped by all of us, so thank you again.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Any other discussion?
Yeah, but...
Mr. Lawrence?
To me, there wasn't supposed to be anything added to it. I know, I mean, you said what you said it would list, but it was actually fifty... I mean, you said it would, you said it would list, but it was actually fifty dollars, like ninety dollars, eighty-five dollars, a hundred dollars.
This is, this is for dental. This isn't, this is dental. This isn't the health insurance.
All right, this is for dental insurance, not health insurance. We still went with tiers, but basically the tiers remained the same.
Correct. I was just under the understanding that none of the tiers, that no one would pay more than they're paying now, and I understood the way it was explained incorrectly. And so that's why I put it back on at the fifty for the family for dental versus the sixty-six.
You want to make sure it's a hundred dollars?
This is dental. This isn't health.
Were you saying sixteen on top of what?
Sixteen.
Sixty-six was what it, currently, everyone pays fifty dollars. The new for the family was sixty-six, and so I put it back on to be fifty for family for dental versus sixty-six.
And what are the other ones? You said you got four tiers in that tier?
Yes, it's...
All the same or different?
Well, you've got, currently, we have the employee only, and that's twenty-five dollars a month.
The others were less, the other three tiers, but the only tier that's on here today is just the one that did increase. The others were a decrease, actually.
Right, the net gain, we thought, was no gain, but the net gain actually was an increase of sixteen dollars and thirty-one cents per month for dental insurance for an employee and their family. Personally, I have no problem with the increase, and that's just my feelings on that. I don't know if there were any other comments. Mr. Lawrence?
No, I think we were trying to make sure it was all the same. Is it same or law? So if it went up sixteen dollars, we need to take that off.
Any other comments? All in favor of the resolution as presented? All opposed? That's a six-one vote. All right, thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion, if there is one.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Guines, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. And let me start with Mr. Glavine. Any questions about any of these issues?
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Barrett, anything? Mr. Deming, anything? Okay. Mr. Lawrence, anything on the consent agenda?
Yeah, when the B, the CASA, that was approved last year, so this is from last year's budget. You give them the five thousand.
Well, the way this works, I think it's kind of goofy, but they sent in a letter asking us for money. We approve that and put it in the budget, but I'm not authorized to pay that money out until I go back to the council and put it on a resolution. So these guys, gets to the end of the fiscal year, and they realize they've never gotten their money, so they just came to us and said, "Hey, when are you going to pay us?" And I said, "I got to run a resolution to pay you." So there's the resolution. It's out of last year's budget, correct?
Right, okay. I was going to say, I was wondering what they waited so long for.
Yeah.
Any other items, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, the... I...
That would be India?
Yeah. Are you getting ready to put this off, have a topic? What are you doing with this piece of property?
We're declaring this, declaring the property to be surplus. We can run an RFP and take bids on proper, what a developer would like to do with it, what their proposal would be, and then we'll decide, looking at what the best option would be. This is the northeast corner of Covet and Division, and then just north of Biloxi Street.
So it runs all the way to the 198 feet back to Division. It's 198 feet long on, I think, and glad a little short on Covet.
The text, the exhibit that's attached to the resolution, remaining parcel on the corner runs all the way back to A Lot. Parcel to the north, on the south way.
How do we want to put this being surplus? Back in ninety-eight, ninety-seven, we went through a lot of trouble to acquire all this property. And what did we pay to take that property back then?
I have no idea. That's the rest, we didn't take that one. I don't know what it cost.
Well, I mean, that's something we need to look at, and then all of a sudden, we declare it so anybody can bid on this and have a minimum bid.
Who is left to determine what the bid is, what to do based on what the project is. In other words, we're not necessarily looking for somebody to pay a high bid, build a home shop, exit for reasonable bid, bid, build a grocery store or convenience store. Council, that may be the way it's supposed to. Look at all the proposals, at least three more proposals.
They have to bring a bid in a plant. And now Q, like in Quebec?
Quebec.
Yeah. What kind of agreement we get with United States transfer, what are we transferring now, or what are we planning on transferring?
All we're doing in this case is signing up to be able to transfer equipment from Defense Department to the Police Department. There's no specific item or items that we're looking for, but first, we have to get into their program. If I got that right, chief? You still here?
That's correct.
Yeah. You could be chief someday.
So you're just going to have an agreement in place to do that?
Yeah, we just got, sort of got to get into their system.
And L, Peter, these Griffins backing on again, what's going on again with the Main Street? There's more time, or we're doing something finally, what?
Mr. Griffin, I think he's, yeah, the layover is at the ninety percent mark. He has to go till October, in October, I believe.
Just extended it. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Newman, anything? Thank you, Mr. Guines, anything? Okay. Let's see, I thought I had a question. Is Mr. Guines are still here? He is, he is. Thank you. On item V, you're accepting grant monies from the Homeland Security, and there's a required match of eighty thousand. That's currently budgeted. That's in your budget right now? I mean, you've got the money for a matching grant. Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you very much. You did good.
Very good.
You did good.
Yeah.
All right. At this, at this point, we'll vote on the consent agenda, all in favor? All right, that's unanimous. Are there any exceptions? Anybody? No exceptions? Terrific. That rarely happens. Thank you. All right, that brings us to the routine agenda. Since we have no code enforcement hearings, I'll accept a motion on the routine agenda.
I'll move.
By Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second? All right, Mr. Glavine. All right, that's fine. Discussion, Mr. Lawrence, usually you have a question.
Well, you did good last week. Did you improve any? Last week, you did good. Thank you, council. So I just wanted to give a summary of how well we've been doing work with our partners at, with MEMA and FEMA. In the month of August, we were reimbursed or received advances of 3.871 million. We currently have close to eight hundred and two thousand dollars. That's in the pipeline, as I call it, and we should receive that this week. That brings us a total of 4.672 million in about six weeks' time, working with our MEMA and FEMA counterparts. And right behind that, we have another 385,000, which I hope receive by the end of September or the first week of October. That'll bring us up to a little over five million dollars. So we're working well with our MEMA team and getting reimbursements and advances, and so we have plenty of cash flow to keep infrastructure program going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodey. Do a good job. I appreciate that, and know the other council members do as well.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion on the routine agenda? Call for the question, all in favor? All right, it's a seven oh vote. I'll entertain a motion to recess.
I'll move.
Made by Mr. Lawrence. Second by Mr. Barrett, all in favor? Thank you. We're a giant. Thank you all for coming tonight.